Two, one. Good evening, everyone. This is a community meeting to talk about proposed dark skies legislation that is very slowly working its way through the Planning Commission and the Metro Council. This has been in the works for at least two or three years. A great committee of citizens has been helping me patiently, as well as folks from the AIA Architects, ABC Contractors, IEEE Engineer folks. I've worked with Metro Planning and Metro Codes, and anyone else who will listen to me and am still working on getting feedback, which is the purpose of tonight's meeting, to introduce why we are looking at dark skies legislation, and then to explain what that proposed legislation is. And to do that, I have several enthusiasts and experts in the field to help me, and I will introduce them in turn. Dr. William Teetz, who is the Director of the Dire Observatory for Vanderbilt University; Theo Wellington, a member of the Barnard-Safert Astronomical Society, I hope I said that right; and George Blue, outstanding amateur astronomist and a good buddy of mine. So with that, I'm gonna start our presentation as soon as I share my screen. Let's see if it works. Yep. All right, does everyone see a picture of the night sky? Hopefully?
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, that is what the sky ought to look like. It's not what I see from my backyard at this point, and that's the reason that we are here. Our hope is that we can make people aware of the effects of light pollution and why we believe that those should be mitigated, and then to talk further about the legislation. So, a quote from Dr. Martin Luther King, "Only in the darkness can you see the stars." And we'll talk about a lot of reasons why you would want to see the stars, and the reason for creating contrast. So with that, I want to turn it over to Dr. Teetz from the Dire Observatory.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Allen, for having me this evening, and good evening, everyone. So I'm just going to take a few minutes to discuss some of the terms and some of the effects of light pollution. So I'm Dr. Billy Teetz, and I'm the Director of the Vanderbilt University Dark Observatory. So dark skies are near and dear to our heart at the observatory, as is the case for pretty much every astronomical observatory. So we'll just jump in and talk a little bit about light pollution. So, light pollution, we have a great example as shown here in this image. This is actually a view over Los Angeles, and it is just chock full of light pollution. So when we say "light pollution," what are we actually meaning? So by definition, the light pollution is really any adverse effect of artificial light. And so as we look at this image, you can see that we've got this very strong dome of light, or this glow right over the city. You can see that there are even a couple of searchlights that are lighting up the night sky. And so you also notice in this picture that there are really no stars whatsoever. I mean, you can search and search, and you're not going to see a star in that image. And, well, one may say, "This is a long exposure image." If I look at the street, which you see towards the very left of the image, you'll see the taillights of vehicles and their headlights, and you'll notice that they're streaks, because this is a little bit of a long exposure image. You may say, "Well, of course, that image is going to look bright, because you've gone through a long exposure." Well, if there were stars visible in that view, they would also appear brighter. But the sky, or the light pollution, has just completely overwhelmed them there, and, which is really a shame, because one of the most famous observatories in the United States, and possibly even the world, Griffith Observatory, is now overlooking that view. So trying to see things like the Milky Way for them has become virtually impossible. So our light pollution is going to come in three main forms, which is skyglow, glare, and trespass. So our skyglow, if we could go back one slide, thank you. So skyglow, you'll notice in this view, this is a few hundred miles from our last view. This is just outside of Tucson, Arizona. Right next to Tucson is a very famous observatory called Kitt Peak National Observatory, which is not home to one, but multiple telescopes that have been there for decades. One view that you'll, or one thing that you'll notice that's a little bit different in this view is over on the left side of the screen, you start to see something in the sky, and that is our Milky Way. Unfortunately, a lot of people in the US, and unfortunately increasingly around the world, have never seen the Milky Way because of light pollution. When Dire Observatory was first constructed over 60 years ago in Brentwood, Tennessee, we were in a fairly dark location. We could see the Milky Way very easily. But now that has become all but impossible because of the skyglow. So you'll notice that the Milky Way has some structure to it. If you go out to a very dark location, which is becoming increasingly difficult nowadays, you'll see that, you'll see this beautiful band of light that's going overhead in the summer and the wintertime, and you'll be able to see that it's got some structure to it. But again, that requires a very dark sky. Look over on the right side of that image. That is what we call skyglow. It's that dome of light that we're seeing going up into the sky from the horizon. And even though we can't even see the city yet, we know it's there because of that skyglow. So as Tucson grows and other cities grow, that skyglow can become larger and larger if dark skies are not taken into account. So, next slide, please. Now compare this to an image that was provided by one of our speakers tonight, Theo Wellington. This is a view of Nashville, and you'll notice that we have a pretty impressive, I hate to say that word, but it is dominant skyglow over Nashville. And you'll notice that in that view, we really don't see stars as well either. So Nashville's skyglow has grown over the years. We can definitely see it from the Dire Observatory up, when we look up towards the north. So again, that's just one form of that light pollution. Another form is glare. We encounter this all the time, especially when we're driving at night. We may have a vehicle coming towards us, and light enters our eye. We don't want it to happen, but it's very hard to keep that from happening from a light source like this, but we get this glare. And even if the light is not incredibly bright, that glare kind of messes up our entire field of view, and we can't even see bright objects that are nearby that light source. And so glare is basically where you're getting this stray light entering in at essentially like shallow angles, and it messes with your visual acuity and your visual perception. And then the final form that I'll mention is something called light trespass. And there's a few forms of it here in this view. You'll notice that we've got our five bright lights, which are there to illuminate the walkway that's going just to the right of the image center. But we've got some porches and decks, basically areas where people are going to be traveling. That's the purpose of having those lights there, is to illuminate that. But you'll notice that these lights, because of, primarily because of their design in this case, are exhibiting a lot of light trespass. And that's where light is leaving the property and is actually encroaching onto a neighboring property, such as the building that you see to the right side of the image. And we've also not only got light trespass there, but if you start to look towards the tops of the roofs, we're starting to get a lot of light trespass even in that direction. We're illuminating rooftops. Honestly, there's really no point to do that with these lights here. And so if you also look at the shape of that glow around those lights, you see that light is also going straight up. So we're getting a lot of contribution to skyglow from these particular lights as well. So again, those are the three main forms of the light pollution that we'll be discussing. And then, you know, there are light pollution consequences. And so to give us a little bit more information about that, I'm going to turn our program over to George Blue. Thank you.
And, thank you, William. And I'm George. I'm not a, I'm interested in the sky. I have looked at it from my backyard for years and years and watched as things that I could see before, I can't see anymore, just because as Nashville's expanded. And we're just south of the city, so looking north, it's a, it's a challenge to try to find anything. Even the Big Dipper's hard to find, so. But, light pollution also affects the natural world in several ways. For example, most songbirds migrate at night. And as they are flying, they use normally what is in the sky to the moon and the stars to find their way. And since that's completely overshadowed by our artificial light, many, many lose their way and run into buildings and die each year. And there's some estimate of between 100 million and a billion birds a year just dying because of that. So, trees. If you look at trees, their natural growing season is not determined solely by temperature, but also by the length of the day. And they become confused and lose their leaves later than they should and bud out earlier, and it interferes with their natural life cycle. And if you've ever gone to the Gulf Coast, and in some areas, they have dark, an awareness of the turtles not being able to find their way to the sea. I can remember very vividly one of our vacation rental houses. They had very strict limits on the lights coming from the house, and that seemed to help the turtles, so. Another impact of light pollution is just the waste. If you'd go back one slide, and by any, by different estimates, around 35% of light is wasted because we're putting it where it isn't needed. That's a good way to think about light pollution. It's putting light where it isn't needed. And you know, many energy companies have discovered that it is more efficient to cut down usage than to build new power plants. And this would be a great way to cut down on the number of power plants we need. And the figure in there says 13% is outdoor lighting. And if you think 35% of that is wasted, that's money that we're all paying for, and we're all paying for that. So, if you saw in a, human life, human health, I'm sorry, is also affected by light pollution. We have a natural rhythm, next slide, please, Berkeley. She's doing a great job, by the way. We have a natural rhythm that we've evolved over the tens of thousands of years based on darkness and light. And we're now light 24 hours a day, and that can interfere with our natural rhythm, circadian rhythm of night and dark. I know many people have sleep problems. Is that because we're in the light all the time? I'm sure that contributes to it. So, safety. And I want to, on one of the earlier slides that William was pointing out, the five lights, if you were walking along that way, and say on that one slide, Berkeley, I'm sorry, a backup one. If you were walking along, imagine that, being able to try to find your way when these bright lights are shining in your face, and you're not able to see the ground because you've lost your night vision. The other safety, I want you to, I want the audience to try to find in this next slide. We have a nice, bright security light, and does a great job of lighting the wall. Can you see in this picture a potential stalker? And since you're all on mute, I guess you can't tell me, so. And there you go. When you put your hand up, it blocks the light, and you can see the stalker. As you go through your neighborhood at night, just take a look around, and you will see many bright lights that probably don't do a lot of good to enhance the safety. So, our next presenter is Theo Wellington. And, take it from here, Theo.
Myself here, there we go. All right, well, I am now the presenter. That's fine. Okay. Um, so we want to talk a little bit about STEM education and why we don't necessarily want our kids to have to be lucky. So are you one of the lucky ones? Okay. Right now, only two out of 10 people on Earth can see the Milky Way. 99% of the USA and Europe are under light pollution. Have you ever had the experience of being up under a truly dark natural sky? It's an amazing thing.
Theo, may I interrupt? I don't think our screen is sharing.
Ah, because she what? She made me the presenter. Is that why? So I'm gonna have to... Berkeley, it's fine with me if you just keep sharing your screen and advance the slides.
And Theo, while I've got you, would you mind telling us what STEM education is?
Good idea. Okay, here we go. We're loading back up. So there we go. Okay, so we're gonna back up a minute. STEM education, STEM is a buzzword that stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. Occasionally, we add the "A" for the arts, because we never want to leave them out and make it steam. But it's been a big push in the United States to get students interested in Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. So, how does light pollution play into that? So if you are one of the unlucky ones, which most of us are these days, that cannot see the Milky Way, and I've had people tell me they didn't realize you could see it. You know, you might have to drive to see it. And I've actually had some people say, "Well, you know, it's the city. What do you expect? So you can always drive to see it." A lot of kids can't. And I would regularly see them in the planetarium. And honestly, when we would finally show them what the natural sky looked like, they would scream, they would be shouting. They've never seen anything like it. So today, most of us can't see it anymore from where we live. And that's really sad, because honestly, if you had a window in your house that looked out over the Grand Canyon, you would not paint that window over. You would enjoy the view. We have literally painted over the most amazing view of the entire universe with light. And it's like we've been saying, it's kind of a waste. We don't need to do that. All right, next slide. So, in LA, once, they had an earthquake that took out the lights. And the amazing thing about that is that the Griffith Observatory got phone calls that night. People were going nuts. They went outside, and they looked around, and they saw the natural sky for the first time in their lives. What was that weird silvery cloud in the sky? And then we had to tell them, "That's up there every night, all the time. That's the Milky Way." And maybe then they understood why it has that name. Next slide. All right, there we go. So this is cycling through a couple of decades' worth of light pollution to show how it's getting worse over time. And it's actually getting worse, I think, faster than the population growth. It's just increasing. We get more light. We like it. We use more of it. And it sort of builds on itself. And you can also see in this how, yeah, east of the Mississippi River is really, really sad. The giant cities of the coast have blended together. Even here, it's pretty much a continuous strip all the way down to Atlanta. Next slide. So we don't want to make you dizzy there. So we're gonna freeze frame it. This is a light pollution map, whoa, 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 there we go, of the US, and it's easy to access. You can find it on the web, lightpollutionmap.info. You wouldn't believe how many times people in Nashville tell me they have a dark sky. I'm going to beg to differ. So let's see, are we on? Yeah, this is Nashville, and Nashville is nowhere dark. It's just nowhere dark. I live way up on the north side of the county. I can walk to the county line, and it's not dark. The weirdest thing is, it's most bright on cloudy nights, because so much of the light then reflects off the bottoms of the clouds. The first time I was ever on a cloudy night at Pickett, it was very strange, because I looked out and wondered, "Why were the stars going out in a part of the sky?" And it was simply that I was seeing clouds as they should be. They were dark. That's really odd. All right, next slide. What can we see? Well, we can still see a little bit. All is not completely lost. This is what Orion, one of our very favorite prominent winter constellations, looks like from Shelby Bottoms. Yes, we do hold star parties in the middle of town. This is a camera view, so it does see a little more than your eye. But it's generally pretty easy to pick out the three stars of the belt and the two above that make up his shoulders, and the two that make up his legs. Next slide. George was mentioning how hard it is to see the Big Dipper. Since I live north of town, when I look out that direction, I'm looking out of town. And so that means I get to see the Big Dipper, and it's actually not a too-bad view. A lot of people have never actually seen the Little Dipper, because here in Nashville, we don't see the Little Dipper. We see Polaris, the North Star, and we see the two stars at the end of the Little Dipper's bowl. But honestly, the rest of it, if I know, I know exactly where to look for them, and on one or two very dark nights, I can find it. But that's actually a really good way to know whether you have a good sky or not, is to just go outside and look and see if you can find the Little Dipper. But, okay, next slide. And now we're gonna, now we're gonna tie that back to STEM. So hit up the next slide for me there, Berkeley.
I am trying. Give me just a second.
Okay. For thousands of years, our ancestors have looked up at the sky. They wondered. They wrote poems. There's art. But most of all, it got them interested. There were regular rhythms in the sky and these patterns. How did that all fit together? What made it work? They discovered amazing rules about this stuff and spent a lot of time figuring it out. And that's how really we got started in science. So when our kids go out, they have not got that link to the natural world. Wait a minute here while she reshares that. But they've lost that. They've lost that linkage to the natural world, and that's what science is all about. It's about going outside and looking at nature and investigating it. And we've actually taken away this huge swath of that that the kids no longer have access to. And that's really, really sad. And so to me, if you want to interest kids in STEM, you want to help bring back the night sky. It's free. You know, to do chemistry, you need a chemistry set. To do biology, you might need a microscope. But anybody can do astronomy, and all you have to do is walk outside and look up. So it's a wonderful science available free for everyone. And you can, these days, even use apps on your phone to do citizen science, but you have to be able to see some sky. All right, we got the slideshow back yet?
We got it. Oh, I have it back. Do y'all not see it?
Not yet.
Okay. Oh, sorry. I was looking at lovely pictures. Okay.
And I was, I was going to add that you don't have to have a telescope to be able to go out and appreciate that sky and learn a lot about it. I mean, just your bare eyes, your little mini telescopes can show you so much of the sky.
Down to 31.
Do you, all right, can you see it now?
I can see it. It's not yet running as a presentation.
Okay.
But slide 31 is kind of where I wanted to be.
My goodness, what is that?
Oh.
All right.
Not shared that way.
Okay, here we go. I'm gonna back up. Let's see. All right. Let me back up.
There we go.
There we go. Okay. Did you get to see the, okay, so you saw the Big Dipper, and there's "Reach for the Stars"?
Yeah.
How's that?
These posters are in every school, right? We tell the kids, "Reach for the stars, reach..." And they can't see the stars. So I would like to have that be more real to them, that they can reach for the stars and they can see the stars. You know, that you can go out and even watch some of our artificial things. You know, the ISS passing overhead, the satellites that are, you know, giving them their TV stations. It's fun to be able to go out and even look at that, how humans are working and living in space. But there is so much, like Billy said, that you can do with just your eyes. You know, I grew up in a time about two miles from the center of Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, the capital city, and I could still see the Milky Way from my backyard. You know, we didn't have a lot of money, so I didn't have much of a telescope at all until I was, you know, some age, and then it was a tiny little thing. So I did most of my astronomy with just my eyes, and it was just wonderful to learn about the sky and be able to go out and just look at it. So I really want to encourage us to not, it's not about amateur astronomers, even though it, I mean, we want it to be about us. It's really about opening the sky back up to everyone. So with that, I'm going to turn it back over to Berkeley.
That's great. Thank you. That's, there's a reason I let you three do this, because I appreciate the enthusiasm. So just, just to recap, we've talked about the importance of astronomy just for education for our kids. We've talked about saving energy. We've talked about the environment. And we've talked about human health. There are a number of reasons that this is important. So I hope that, that we've persuaded you that this is, is an important thing to do. But we can make a difference, and that's, that's why we're here tonight. And there's just general education of awareness and asking people to turn off lights, and we'll do that as well. But a number of cities, beginning with, we can talk about coastal cities, that passed laws that simply made sure that when, when things were built or when people put their lights on their house, that they knew that they needed to do them in a way that didn't, didn't trespass into areas that shouldn't be lit, or that were turned off when they needed to be. And so that is, we don't need to be as extreme as coastal city or someone, the city that's trying to make their tourism off of astronomy. But we can make a difference, I think, in Nashville, you know, in a reasonable way that at least gives, as Theo has said, gives our children back the opportunity to know what, what the stars are that they're reaching for. So reducing light pollution simply boils down to better lighting design. And that consists of three parts. First of all, is shielding the light and making sure that it goes where you need it and not where you don't need it. And we've seen plenty of examples of that already. The next is to look at the color of that lighting. And that's measured in something we call Kelvin, which is another way of measuring temperature, similar to Fahrenheit, only bigger. And currently, if you have light that is in the spectrum around 3,000 Kelvin and lower, that has more of the yellow spectrum in it, that their science has shown that having that light around you at nighttime, as you, as you head to bed, makes it easier for you to sleep. I mean, I think everybody's heard about, you know, blue screens being bad, and this is exactly what they're talking about. So specifying that light be at a certain point in the spectrum can make a difference in what gets installed around your house and around where you're trying to go to sleep at night. And then, most importantly, the intensity and the warranting. Warranting being, you know, when is light actually warranted? Do you need it after everyone has left the premises? Or can you, can you back the intensity down when, when people are mostly absent? So we're gonna talk a little bit about lighting ordinances in general, and then talk more specifically about what's being proposed for Nashville. So the three tenets of any lighting ordinance are: Use only as much light as you need. Aim the light only where you need it. And turn the light off or dim it after the hours when you need it. And Nashville follows in that, in that, in those footsteps. Just a little bit about it, it applies to new commercial and multifamily construction. So we're not asking people to go back and change the lighting that was installed on, you know, their new office building last year. But just going forward, explaining this is, these are the standards that are appropriate for Nashville. Ultimately, that will have an effect on what, what we've seen. And also that, for single-family homes, there is already a lighting ordinance that requires that your lighting not trespass into other people's areas. And we hang on to that piece of it. So the only way this applies for single-family homes is just making sure that the lighting around your house stays around your house and doesn't shine into your neighbor's bedroom window. And the way the Nashville ordinance works is through two sections of the code. And the way the Nashville ordinance works is through two sections of the code. Metro code consists of a number of different sections and section sixteen is the building code and section seventeen is the zoning code. And that's where these pieces, where the legislation will, will ultimately appear in, in the code. So just before we get into what it does do, I want to talk real quickly about what it doesn't do. It doesn't affect the airport in any way. That lighting is, is needed and we're, we're not touching that. This will not affect street lighting. Metro code can't affect street lighting, but we are working with both NES and with Metro Public Works to talk about what future street lighting will look like and what types of, of lamps are appropriate for street lighting. So we won't be affecting that with the ordinance. But we are in conversations with those organizations just to try to be more mindful about how that lighting is done. Also, we can't regulate T-DOT, so this won't affect interstate lighting. But in the same way, we have had multiple conversations already with T-DOT about as new lights are installed on the interstate, can we talk about the light spectrum that is, that is done there? And some of you may be aware that when the I-440 construction was done through conversations begun by this group, we were able to, to persuade T-DOT to lower the, the quote, "temperature" of those lights so that they initially were, were specified to be the very, very, very bright white types of lights that then backed those down to closer to the yellow spectrum. Because this, this group got people's attention. And T-DOT had not really been thinking about it that much. They had just kind of grabbed a typical set of specs and when asked what they really needed, they were willing to, to, to warm those lights up a little bit, which I think was, which is the importance of this. Just by having people ask questions, we can make a difference. And finally, this will not apply to the honky tonks of downtown Nashville because that is, again, its own area. You can't see the stars from downtown Nashville and those aren't the stars you went down there to see anyway. So we won't be affecting those two streets, but, but in general, for the rest of Nashville, we will have options for some of the more commercial areas. But for those two areas, we, we will be leaving those to, to their own bright honky tonk glitziness, which I think is appropriate. So the part of the, the proposed ordinance that deals with the building code defines lighting maximums, maximum levels for parking lots and calls for timers and motion detectors to reduce that lighting when, when there are no customers around in that parking lot, but to, not to turn it off completely. I mean, we still have safety standards, but simply to, to turn it down to something that's more appropriate. And it directs designers to the zoning code for the rest of the standards for the exteriors of buildings. So that they all, so that when, when lighting professionals from out of town, for example, will say, you know, what am I, what are the rules in Nashville? They will always start with our building code. And this will ensure that within our building code, they then know to go to the zoning code to look for the rest of the information. So within the zoning code, the part that deals with building exteriors, we will again describe maximum lighting levels for the building exteriors. And that's how much to put on the sidewalks and parking lots around or at your building exteriors. And again, call for timers and motion detectors to dim that light after, after the customers have gone. And then shields or, or design to prevent light trespass onto other properties. So that's the basics of what ours will do. We have simplified it so that there is one standard that applies to most of the areas of Nashville. However, we will leave an alternative for a very sophisticated project that's going to have engineers doing the designing. We can direct them to the model lighting ordinance that we use to, to determine what to do in Nashville. And that actually divides the city into five different lighting zones. Lighting zone zero is the totally rural area, which has very little ambient lighting and it has very low standards in terms of how many lumens per square foot you would have allowed for lighting. All the way up to lighting zone number four, which is a very bright area similar to, to downtown. And that would have a much higher number of lumens per square foot that would be allowed. And it also spells out what, what you can do for specific areas like drive-throughs on restaurants or building entrances or guard towers or things like that. So if, if a project needs to go through a more complicated process to get flexibility, rather than just having a single standard that they work with, we have then provided an, an alternative to the simplified lighting code that we're proposing by way of the model lighting ordinance. So that is a lot to absorb. But I want to now go back to asking if people have questions or comments. And to tell you a little bit, before I do that, tell you a little bit about what the sequence is. As I said, this has been several years in the making. And we go from here to actually filing the legislation. That has been done back in December. And then it was immediately sort of put on hold so that it's been out in the public eye for people to look at. And I hope people have done that. And it will next go to the planning department on, in February, February second, I believe, is the date of that hearing. The first, the first Thursday in February, the planning, second Thursday, excuse me, second Thursday in February, that's February 11th. The Planning Commission will hear comments on, on the, the proposed amendment. And I have been working with the planning staff already to incorporate some of their suggestions. So we will already have some changes incorporated that, that, that will be suggested after that meeting is done. And then from there, the, the substitute bill that the planning staff will recommend will then go before the council for a public hearing in March. And that will be the first Tuesday in March and the public is again invited to either right ahead of time or to, to participate in that public hearing and give us feedback. And then it will be finally voted on at third reading in the council. So there are multiple opportunities to incorporate feedback from stakeholders and I have welcomed their input all along and will continue to do that. And hopefully, when we are through with this process, everyone will feel like they've been able to be a part of it, but that we will make a difference so that lighting design in Nashville is smarter and protects our night sky in a way that, that, that brings back the elements that you've heard about that are so important. So I see some folks who have raised their hand and I will recognize you as soon as I do just a quick tutorial to anybody that needs it. On, on WebEx, in theory, in the lower right-hand part of your screen, there should be a tiny little hand that looks like this that you can, you can click on and then it will, it will raise your virtual hand and I will call on you. And I will ask Don Tree at this point, if you see people who've raised their hands, if you can enable them to speak, that would be great. So the first hand that I see raised is Twana Chick, my former COCO, and I appreciate all the work she did on the Metro Police Department. Thank you for that. And now she is a great activist out in Cambridge area. So I, I shouldn't say Sergeant Chick, but I don't think I give you that way. Ms. Chick, you are recognized and it looks to me like your microphone is up and working. So I would welcome your questions.
Thank you. And I apologize in advance for the thunder going on out here. I am in support of this. I have some comments and some questions. First comment is that just a tiny little LED on a humidifier disrupts my sleep. And there are other people who it only takes a very small amount. And so that also affects people's health, their productivity. Things that weren't brought up is it affects honeybees, the night birds like whipperwills and night jars that we don't get to hear anymore. It does affect crime. More light does not make a neighborhood safer. I can give dozens of examples of that. There are dozens and dozens of satellites and shooting stars any given week that people don't get to see. I think people use LEDs more now because they're more efficient and more economical. And so that has made our light pollution problem even worse. My concerns is that this legislation not move too fast because I think it's pretty complicated and I want it to be done right. I have a concern about enforcement. I hope you can address that. I have a concern that it will apply to the General Services District and perhaps that last thing you said about a lighting zone zero is going to impact that more. I have a concern that there's going to be too much grandfathering and not enough urging of people to reduce light that they've had too bright in the past. I would really like to see streetlights covered in some way because out here in Cambridge, a bright street light because it is adjacent to nearby darkness is even more of a problem when it gets in your eyes. So the amount of light relative to the amount of darkness is very important. I would also like to see something that maybe requires especially commercial buildings. If they still have lights on at night, at least use a window covering. The specific example is CHS out here in Century Farms. It's way up on a hill. It's in a residential area. And so at night, those lights make it look like a giant shining Rubik's Cube. We have some developers out here we're working with who are willing to do less light, but they have a problem with there being sufficient lights authorized by NES to use. And then my final comment is that this event should mimic a real-life public meeting and therefore I should be able to look around and see who is in the room. The participants should not be hidden. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Chick, for all those, all those comments. I will try to address them. And usually if you click on view attendees, you can see who the other people in the room are. Let me know if that's not working for you. I am currently able to see, I think, all the names and I see, I want to, I want to respond to your questions and then I will acknowledge other hands that I think I see raised. So first to enforcement, that's an excellent question. The way this has been set up is that the property standards division has to review all building drawings before they go out for construction and they have a process that they go through to compare them to the electrical code, the energy code, the mechanical code. And so they are the ones who will be charged with ensuring that this is also adhered to. And as I said, I've met with the codes department and talked about that. So what will be required is that the lighting engineer will be required to provide a certification that they have, they have met these, these standards. And so that, that process is baked in on the front end and then in, and then when things are built, the inspectors, the building inspectors then have the, the plans that were, that were approved, that they have to be built according to. So there's, there's a process for ensuring that the plans are correct and then there's a process for ensuring that they're built according to plan. And I hope that this will provide further impetus to a shortcoming that we currently have with enforcement of lighting, which is that there is very limited ability to, to follow through on code issues on weekends and at nights. But there's a growing need to do that and this adds to that need. And I think that having citizens like the folks on this call to help push for that will help not only enforce the, you know, the additions that we're making here, but also the original light trespass law, which has been fairly difficult to follow through on. So I think that's, I think this is going to be the beginning of, of increasing the effectiveness of enforcement. You mentioned GSD. So this is, this applies countywide. There is no distinction between GSD on this one. The, currently, it has been set up so that it, the only requirements for single-family homes deal with the, the light trespass piece of it. And I, I think we are working on language to, to explicitly point out that uplighting is another form of light trespass. Even if it's in the, you know, the four squares of, of the, the borders of your property, but it, but it goes straight up where you don't need it. That, that can be considered trespass as well. That is not currently written in explicitly, but I think it, it fits within that. Second grandfathering, I think that is, is a very valid point. I will say again that we, we have learned through both our sidewalk process and our tree ordinance that sometimes it is most effective to begin with the part that you know you can do and to get people educated on how something works and to realize that it is not necessarily difficult to comply with. And then you can begin expanding the reach so that it becomes more and more effective. And I think that is a strategy that will be appropriate here. And I, and I think that, you know, we, I will put the onus on all of us to, to check back once, once this has been in place and, and, and adjusted to, to, to then come back and say, great, this is working well. How do we, how do we now begin to apply this to, to other areas where, where too much lighting is still a problem? So I, I welcome that, that suggestion. Streetlights, simply by code, the, the Metro code cannot regulate Public Works and NES. I have checked into this repeatedly and we can't do it that way. However, there's all, already an, an ongoing conversation between Public Works and NES to update our street lighting system. And I have inserted myself into that conversation every chance I get. And I think we have some folks from Public Works on this call who have been very open to meeting with me and other experts who I invite to join that conversation about what type of lamps are appropriate. And I think for every light that is on the approved list now, half of those already are, are dark skies compliant with regard to the upward shielding. But the other half are not, and I think that we can find an equivalent that would do the same job of lighting what's below without shooting any lighting up. And so that's a conversation that is, is in the works and will continue so that, that we can have an effect on street lighting. And again, I think T-DOT has standards that they have to meet, but they, they respond to public input, if not public pressure. And I think that having continued input at, at the level of T-BOT, T-DOT, just to make them aware simply of where the light is aimed and, and what, what the light spectrum is and can make a difference in how that is done. So we can't regulate those two, but we can, we can work to, to, to influence them. And so I think that's a great suggestion. Window covering at night, I think, is covered under the light trespass piece of this. That window covering could be one way that if, if someone's lights are already too bright. Technically, this speaks specifically to exterior lighting. So this may, this may be an area that we, we have to look at further down the line, but I think it's a great, a great suggestion. And I've already talked, I, I think that I have responded to all the items that I wrote down. So I appreciate, I appreciate the support and I appreciate you pushing us to do better. And I am, I am all for that. I see, let's see, I saw some question marks from John Stern. Were you wishing to speak? And I see the little clapping hands, which I appreciate, but did you recognize Mr. Stern?
Let's see, how do we do this?
There you are. I hear you.
Let's see. Oh, there we go. Thank you, Berkeley, and thank to, to all the presenters. You guys are marvelous. As, as we have worked on legislative initiatives over the years, it, it sometimes comes down to what is relevant and pertinent to various user groups. For me, I love the examples about light pollution and what it does to visualizing the stars. To others, we're talking about cost and the cost, the cost of creating a lighting plan for a new subdivision, say. Or what is the cost versus existing standards? I've got to believe that there is a long-term benefit financially for this strategy because it just makes too much sense to me. And first of all, well, second of all, you know, I support everything Twana Chick says. So we'll go further from there. Have you all started looking at both those cost issues, but also how we're going to sell this to the larger public? How do we engage people in discussion about? public? How do we engage people in discussion about the beauty of the sky and how we can make this reality for Nashvilleians in the midst of a COVID pandemic, an economic crisis, and, you know, the four other, the financial crisis that the city is under? I think that's more than plenty to give to you, Berkeley. I appreciate your leadership.
Good questions.
And I hope you dissolve all of them.
Good, good questions. I appreciate all those. And I will point out, John Stern, that Stern is German for star. So this is, this is, it's, it's meant to be involved in this conversation. So to, to answer your question about cost, I think that's an, that's an excellent one. The way this is written, as I, as I interpret it, because it applies to commercial and multifamily, those are the projects that are going to have a design professional on hand anyway. There are, there are already companies that do the lighting. When, when you design the lighting for a parking lot, there's already someone who has to go through and look at the photometrics of it and ensure that, that you're lighting, you know, that you're getting the light where you need it, at the amounts that you need it. So all we're doing is saying, do the photometric study and, and show that it, it accomplishes the goals that we have in mind. And I, you know, that's, that's another of the experts that have run this past is, you know, here, here's what I'm, here's what I'm asking, can you do this? And she said, this is what I do all the time. And, you know, here's some suggestions and those are reflected in the substitute that you'll see there. So in, in terms of additional design costs, it's simply a matter of when you, when you do this, when you do your design to say, you know, these are the standards, these are the maximums, you have to, you have to have someone to check this out anyway. When they check it, make sure that this is what it does and have them stamp it. So I don't, I don't believe that it will add a lot of extra cost on the front end. And in terms of materials, again, it's choosing a light that, that has a shield as opposed to one that, that aims light straight up. But it's, it's not necessarily more expensive light. It's just, it's just being deliberate in your, in your, in your choices of lighting. So I, I, at this point, I don't, the intention has not been to add a lot of cost on the front end because goodness knows, as you've pointed out, there are enough other things that we're having to spend money on that we didn't plan to. And again, for single family homes, we're just, we're just saying, when you put your lights up, aim them, aim them in your, on your own property and don't shine them in your neighbor's yard or up in the sky. And as you pointed out, this is all about not using more light than you need, which is energy, and not using it when you don't need it, which is energy. So both of those are cost savings if you're using less energy and you're using it less of the time. So I think that's, that's relevant as well. And to, to, to circle back around to another of Twana Chick's suggestions about taking this slow, that I think that is absolutely appropriate. And as I said, this was introduced in December. It's, I mean, this is, this is one public meeting. If we need to have more, I'm happy to do that. Hopefully someday we can see each other in person, but they may, they may yet need to be virtual. This will not go before planning until next month, February, which is almost upon us. It won't get to council until March. And if we feel like we need to continue to move slowly, it can be deferred at that point in March. So I, I am, I am, and like I say, I've been at this for a couple of years now. So I, I think there are some, some on the team who think it's moving at, at a glacial pace. No one has accused me of rushing this yet. So I, I don't intend to change, change my strategy on that. So I, I agree that, that slow and thoughtful is the way to move forward. So we'll continue to, to look for inputs there. I see Theo with your real hand raised. Is that, is that a request to speak?
Yeah. One of the big things, I mean, the short answer for people in business is the saves money, saves money, saves money. And, and really when you look at, I've did a lot of driving around the country before COVID and you would be amazed at how many other cities are pointing their lights down. We are definitely not in front of the curve on this. There are lots of good lights available to us to use. And so saves money. The bad part is, and I mean, I had a guy when he was installing lighting at the Adventure Science Center say it to me this way. He says, but you can get twice the light for half the price. I go, no, no, no. We want less light for even less money. So yeah, the new LED lights are great, except for the blueness thing. So when you step it down and, and point them down, they can really save you some money. So Knoxville replaced all their city lighting. Most of it is now sky friendly. So there are cities even in Tennessee that are finally coming around. So I, you know, T-Dot, I wish they would kind of go and I'm taking pictures of other states' lighting is what I'm ending up doing. And not just the famous ones like New Mexico or Arizona, but everybody in between. And Kentucky has got some really good lights. So it's not just astronomy people. It's everybody because they're realizing it saves them money. And you can light the, whatever you're lighting, you can do a better job and make it safer if it's an auto, you know, zone or whatever. You can actually do better. A lot of the arguments for not doing it come down to the same one that if you've ever been to a small church meeting, you've heard a million times, we've always done it this way. And that's nice, but, and hopefully as people change because right now Nashville is kind of on the cusp of flipping over, at least in the metro areas, to LED lighting. So we're not going to ask them to redo anything. Just do it right the first time. So that's kind of, I think, what we're headed for.
Agreed, agreed. I do not see any other questions, but I see Dr. Teets who I'll recognize. You're next.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right? All right. I just had two questions. So is there any compensation for folks that say have the bad style of lighting, but decide to upgrade? You know, it's kind of like some of the tax breaks that you can get for energy efficiency. Is there anything being looked at now for that? And there was one other question. If I had, say, a neighbor of mine who decided that they want to install a, a light that just pointed straight up, and, you know, they did it themselves, is there any consequence of that, I should say, if, if the legislation had passed at that point?
Excellent questions. Oh, so the first one is, I'm sorry to say that there's, there's currently no, no mechanism in place to, to give tax breaks or incentives or whatever for better lighting. However, you will save money. So we, we feel like that's an incentive and you'll be able to see the Milky Way if you, if we all get together and do this. So it's, it's going to be a group benefit there. The second one is, as I referred to earlier, enforcement after the fact has been difficult for light trespass in the past in Nashville, simply because there have not been enough reasons for Metro to provide personnel to do after hours enforcement. That, that is changing to some degree just because of, of other pressures. I mean, we, we've had issues with other, other codes and laws being, being disregarded at night when they were under the purview of codes as opposed to Metro Police. And we've had the discussion of can we create a flex team that works after hours? So that's the first thing we have to do. The second thing we have to do is to, is to have a light meter that will be admissible in, in court. So just to be able to say, I have measured, you know, your lighting with this calibrated light meter. It's the official Metro light meter and you're, the light coming across your property line from your neighbor is, is one foot candle and it's only supposed to be a half a foot candle. You know, we can now show this to your neighbor nicely and maybe they will redirect their light or put a shield on it and that's the end of the problem. So those two things need to happen and I am hopeful that, you know, having more reasons for, for Metro to, to implement those things will, will get them going. The light meter would be a cost to the city, but it's not a big one. I mean, we have, we have one at my office because I'm a mechanical engineer and I just walk over to the electrical guys and borrow theirs. But I haven't been able to persuade Metro that, that they can use that when I've complained. And having, having personnel available at night, but there are enough other reasons that we need to do that, that I think that's something that will, that will ultimately fall into place. And I, I think by the, by the time we've seen enough installations that we need this, I think, I think we'll have it. And again, it helps if there are lots of people advocating for that. So you're all invited to advocate for that. We are at the end of our hour. I appreciate everyone who has tuned in to ask questions. I see Sergeant Chick, I see your hand blinking again. Is that, would you like to be recognized one last time in the 30 seconds we have remaining? I see your hand is down. Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to say I, my, my email address is berkeley.allen, B U R K L E Y dot A L L E N at nashville.gov. And I would love to hear from anyone who has opinions on this. I'm so grateful to all of you for tuning in. And as I've said, this will go before the Planning Commission, February 11th, before the council, March 2nd. Those are both opportunities for input and, and I welcome all of that. And I'm going to give everybody back the, the rest of their evening, but please feel free to email me if you have other questions or comments. And thanks again to my, my fellow presenters. It sure would have been a lot less exciting if y'all had hadn't listened to my voice the entire time. And I'm so thrilled to have Dr. Teets and Theo and George Blue help me persuade people that our night sky is something worth protecting. Thank you all so much. Please let me hear from you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.